My granddaughter just returned from the high school. I don't know what happened this year.
Allergies.
Oh, God. How do you feel?
I don't have so far.
I don't actually take anything and I'm taking stuff this year. That's how it is. It's not good. I'm not enjoying it.
All right, I'm going to call it season. I called it season.
Call it season.
That's good.
It's dark in the works, actually. It was the first of spring and we were just talking about allergies.
A little spring fever, man.
Yes. And we have Leila Aman and Kelly Keener and the Downtown Business Association.
I'm just going to kick it off. So, Leila Aman, we're Development Manager, work with Kelly. And I'm basically going to hand it over to her. This is part of quarterly updates that the Downtown Business Association gives us. So, I'm going to hand it to you. I have a feeling you need to relax. Yeah, you're good.
Good afternoon. Nice to see everyone again. I said to Leila, I said, "This feels like it came really fast this quarter." Doesn't it? It feels like it was just here.
Yeah.
So, some fun updates, exciting times, a lot happening. I know that I will immediately say that we are working very closely with Leila. With all of the development activity event that's going to happen in downtown, we've had a real resurgence of resurgence, probably, is a better word, of the businesses and their engagement in what's happening. Because there's so many parts and pieces. It's funny, we start talking about the South End and then I remind everyone that the library is also going to be under construction. They're like, "Oh, God, I forgot about that." I'm like, "Yeah, I know." I'm keeping a spreadsheet, right?
Yes.
So, it's an exciting, pretty exciting time with the activity that we're seeing with our group. One of the things, from a marketing standpoint, that we have coming, and I finally got the date right, which would be Saturday, March, not October, not July.
31st.
31st. We got it handled. We're going to do the bunny hop again this year. For those of you that did not get to participate or know what that is, essentially, the kids dress in their Easter best or whatever costumes. We had a little bit of everything last year. It was pretty sweet. Bring their bunny baskets downtown and they visit the businesses and pick up eggs and treats and things that the Easter bunny left. Because he's a busy guy and has to sort of balance his time. So, he does some drop-offs downtown. So, we're looking forward to that. It's from 2:00 to 5:00. And it's participation is based on the business, if they can or they can't, what they have going that weekend. So, that's kind of our big marketing fun time going on. Following right behind that, obviously, First Friday, lots of activity as far as pulling those parts and pieces together. And we're in the permitting stages of everything and getting all the paperwork, the not-so-fun part of it done and getting that ready to go. Happy news, exciting news, and we've talked about it for two years, I think, all month, I think? Yeah, two and a half years. There will be hanging flower baskets in the city of Milwaukee this year.
Yeah, good job.
And pridefully, I will say that that contract was awarded to Milwaukee Floral as well. So, we got to keep it in our own neighborhood, which was really awesome. She's great, isn't she? We were chatting this morning and she's really excited about it. And we are too. So, and yeah.
Besides State Main Street, what other...
So, there'll be some on 21st, primarily, Main Street. What I have to remind everyone is not every block, and I will tell you personally, my block will not have a hanging basket in it. But not every block will have a basket. We are limited by what PG will allow us to hang and where also the placement of our pools are in the city. Our founding fathers did not anticipate that we would want to have evenly spaced pools up and down the streets of Milwaukee to put flower baskets on. So, they will be in various locations throughout the city. We are in discussion right now. In fact, we're going to talk about it tonight at another meeting. We're headed off to doing some plantings at ground level. We are going to add, and we're going to change things up a little bit this year. The Downtown Business Association is going to do their annual birthday cleanup on the Saturday, the 21st, just like we do. And then, but this year, instead of just strict bark, we're actually going to do a primarily mulch-bark combination and really get these beds back in shape. They've kind of taken, that dusting of bark is just literally kind of just, it vanishes throughout the year. So, we're going to try and get it done right this year. And then, if everything goes right, we'll get the planting actually done. The conversation is, is the watering. I'll kind of give you an update on that. We got some updated information just late this afternoon. So, and what that, what are our options and what we decide based on costs to be able to get those watered? Because two years ago, it was me at 9:00 at night watering those and it wasn't as much fun as it looks like.
None of, just so people know, none of the fall-balance has replaced. So, that's part of the problem. Yeah. So, we're doing a lot of handwork.
And it's really all volunteer. And we have one location in the city to pull water from, too, which is this bicket that maybe sits about that far about underground. So, it's interesting.
So, are you going to change that? Is that a turn and go south?
Yeah, so the Plaza Street will have hookups for water and pro-electrical because that's where we'll have the farmers market. So, we'll have a substantial improvement on that portion of the street. And we'll also have the new light bulbs and other things that will allow for that sort of to move forward. But we're actually, like I said, Milwaukee Floral has been lovely to work with. So, we want to make sure that we're supporting their business as well as doing what the city can afford. So, Alma has been working on this, but she's super excited.
Yeah, it's been great. And like I said, Cory, she's delighted. She's very proud to have her product coming down and throughout the city. So, and we're delighted to have that happen. That's it for me. Tried to keep it short and sweet this time.
Thank you.
Construction coordination. Construction coordination group. I like that. Yeah. So, actually, Leila just mentioned, so within the Business Association, we've established a group specifically focused, I think there's seven of us on the team, specifically focused on construction so that we can react to the businesses, engage with the businesses. So, you'll see us out there actually with our fancy little ambassador badges. We're out trying to do feet-on-the-street communication and then getting as much feedback as we can to bring back to you. Sort of what we need is a support system to work through these next, I'm going to say, two years easily. So, only to start then another project, which I know we talk about later tonight. So, we have started that group within our organization and it's from the folks from the North End and the South End. So, and all in between. So, we've got a really great kind of gauge of what's going on in different pockets as far as this, that connectivity. So, we're excited about it.
Are we putting in the wayfinding pretty soon as well?
Sure, we've been working on it. The designs have been approved. Special thanks to Vera and the team who's been working on those. So, those are at the printers, I believe, right now. Yeah, you're going to see it in the very near future.
So, the fun story that I get to tell at our meetings is I use your line, which is "Spring of 2018, summer of 2018." Those are my, and they're not buying it like I am.
Yeah. I don't give commitments more than seasons. Some of the season kind of commitment.
Sort of fitting for the seasonal meeting, Mark, right?
Yeah.
Seasonal, so.
Wishful thinking.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Kelly because we initially talked about having a group of business owners to help us as we start construction and to do things that we can support the businesses. So, it's better to ask than to businesses. So, she offered to get a group together and it's got a pretty good group of folks together. They've come up with some, I think, really tangible ideas that we can help with. So, and I think we're planning to meet sometime next month. But I just appreciate that on the side of the businesses. It's sort of an extra duty that they're doing on top of working with the DMBA. So, I think it's really important as we move forward to have that collaboration. So, I appreciate the work you've done to get that together.
Absolutely. Great. All right, thank you.
Have you heard anything about what's happening with Chopsticks?
I have not talked to Sunny, so I do not, I don't have enough as of yet. I think it's moving forward. Trust me, I'm highly engaged. Getting that to happen, without a doubt, so.
Is it? Never mind. I didn't know how public everything was.
He talks about it. Yeah, he talks about it. I don't think it's a big secret, but I mean, or he wouldn't be out there chatting about it. So, not talking out of school, for sure.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah. So, fingers crossed. Sooner than later would be great.
Yeah.
I'm not sure June is going to be the actual, that was the original goal. Might be June of, summer of 2019.
Sometimes it becomes late summer.
Right. Indian summer or something like that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
Hi, Amy, you want to come on up? So, the next item is the modular unit for the temporary library update. Leila Sting at the table.
Hi, I'm Sting. You're going to see a lot of me later, too.
She'll be joined by Amy Woodtrout.
Yeah, so tonight, I think we're, this is going to be on the consent agenda, but this is the lease for securing the modular unit for the temporary library. As you know, planning commission approved, the CSU, the Community Service Use, and the temporary relocation of the library with the modular unit on the Tri-Mont site, 9600 Southeast Main. And so, this will secure the unit for us so that we have it for a period of 18 months. And then, I believe there's a renewal. So, we're negotiating the kind of the final terms of the lease. But in terms of the overall cost, which we're estimating for 18 months plus a tear-down and installation cost, we are looking for approval to move forward with the lease in the amount of $325,000 maximum. We don't expect to spend that much. And so, this is just essential for us to both secure that lease, to secure the unit, and enable us to move forward with that. And we're looking at the relocation starting sometime late spring. Potentially early summer.
2018.
2018.
Oh, very good.
So that we can stay as much on schedule as possible with the construction, the reconstruction of the library. So, that's where it stands. Both Amy and I are available if you have any questions about the lease or the move, anything.
You said it's still, my one question is, there's the added, if lease is terminated early and building is leased to another entity with minimum, is that going to...
I didn't hear you say.
See, the portion of the, if the lease is terminated, the very end of it, you've got a couple of things to add to the lease. Suggested language about if lease is terminated early and building is leased to another entity within minimum lease period, less he is entitled to a refund of lease paid for overlapping period? Is that likely to, because that's actually kind of more in line with what we were actually, what we were talking about at the task force, which is that we would be able to leave. This is, one of the benefits is that we could get out of it early.
Yeah, I think that is still, that is still under consideration. We negotiated the rates based on an 18-month.
They haven't agreed to that term, though.
They have?
Yeah.
Oh, good, that was my question.
Yeah, no, they've agreed to all the terms.
Thank you.
I didn't see Haley commit. Negotiated the lease, so I added that term and they were open to it. So, basically, the rates that we got, we had to commit to the 18-month. But I wanted, because we're only supposed to have a 12-month construction period, but we don't know and that can't quite count the demo. So, I wanted us to have an opportunity to potentially recapture those funds if we got out early and they were able to release it.
Okay. So, they are open to that?
Yeah, they've already agreed to that term.
Okay, great, that was my only question. That's, thank you.
They've been highly flexible and very easy to work with. So, we've got, we've got some wiggle room as far as like our start dates and everything. Of course, we're not getting charged until we actually mobilize.
Right. Until they actually have it installed, right?
How much lead time do they need?
At the very end, it said if we tell them before June, June, basically 30 days, or like if we go now, but if it's going to be after June, the summer is their busiest time. So, they've asked for at least 60 days. So, basically, we're hoping to narrow down the time to give them heads-up sooner in the next couple of weeks of whether it's earlier spring or later spring or earlier summer. But they're willing to work with us at this point. So, we can move in as late as September 1st or have them mobilized as late as September 1st and not start paying.
Yeah.
Penalty. And that was important to have that flexibility.
What's the square footage?
Just 8,300 or something.
Yeah, actually, it's a little bit.
And is it one, is it one building that they, or is it modules?
Two, it's put together.
Yeah, it's actually, we've been referring to it as the seven plus five because it's, it's a unit that composes basically seven modules together and then another joining unit that is five modules.
And will they be separated in that they each share a different purpose? Or are they somehow connected to where you walk in and you're in the whole deal?
They are connected. So, like, once you're in, you're in the whole deal. There is like a, there is a little bit of space between the seven plex and the five plex, if you will. But you, it should be almost imperceivable. Like, it'd probably be a little bit thicker than the normal walkway that you go through via door. Yeah. And then, there are, there are some, the way that it's built out, there are some separated areas. So, the library is currently programming the interior so that they'll have like, this is the mystery room and this is the nonfiction room and this is the Russian collection. And I, you know, I'm just, as an example, I don't know the exact layout of it yet. But there's also a large open area. So, there's, there's a bit of flexibility, but it's going to be kind of themed as far as the rooms go.
What do we do with our, the books that don't fit? Where do they go for the time being?
They go to Harvey. So, we have our old firehouse. That's where we also have some wells over by Water Tower Park. We are, we bumped up a project in the CIP, which was a new roof on that building just to make sure we don't damage the books that we then store there. So, that was our big priority is making sure that the facility wouldn't have any issues once we put books in there. But that's the intent is that we'll store them there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm away early, so.
And we're happy.
That's a cool thing to do. Except to see what we have here yet.
P-SAC.
All right, P-SAC, that's right. So, P-SAC.
I get to summarize it or are you going to P-SAC? Are you expecting some of them? I did get a response from Meg, but Meg wasn't here for sure. Okay. We can wait or we just thought he'd be a little bit late, so we just...
And the South End, so in the all in between. So we've got a really great kind of gauge of what's going on in different pockets as far as this is that connectivity, so we're excited about it.
Are we putting in the wayfinding pretty soon as well?
Yeah, so we've been working on, the designs have been approved. Special thanks to Vera and the team who's been working on those. So those are at the printers, I believe, right now.
I think so.
Yeah, you're gonna see it in the very near future.
So the fun story that I get to tell at our meetings is I use your line, which is spring of 2018, summer of 2018. Those are my, and they're not buying it like I am.
Yeah. I don't give commitments more than season. Season. Some of the season kind of commitment.
Sort of fitting for the seasonal meeting mark, right?
Yeah.
Wishful thinking.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to Kelly, because we initially talked about having a group of business owners to help us as we start construction to do things that we can support the businesses, so better to ask than the businesses. So she offered to get a group together and has got a pretty good group of folks together. They've come up with some, I think, really tangible ideas that we can help with. So, and I think we're planning to meet sometime next month. But I just appreciate that on the side of the businesses. It's sort of an extra duty that they're doing on top of working with the DNBA. So I think it's really important as we move forward to have that collaboration. And so I appreciate the work you've done to get that together.
Absolutely.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Have you heard anything about what's happening with Chopsticks?
I have not talked to Sunny, so I do not, I haven't, I don't have enough as of yet. I think it's moving forward. Trust me, I'm highly engaged.
Yeah.
Getting that to happen, without a doubt, so.
Is it? Never mind. I didn't know how public everything was.
He talks about it. Yeah, he talks about it. I don't think it's a big secret, but, I mean, or he wouldn't be out there chatting about it, so, not talking out of school, for sure.
Sounds exciting.
Yeah, so, fingers crossed. Sooner than later would be great.
Yeah.
I'm not sure June is gonna be the actual, that was the original goal, might be June of, uh, summer of 2019.
Summer of 2018. Sometimes it becomes late summer.
Right. Indian summer or something like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thanks.
Hi, Amy, you wanna come on up?
Sure.
So the next item is the modular unit for the temporary library update. Leila Sting at the table.
Hi, I'm Sting. You're gonna see a lot of me later, too.
She'll be joined by Amy Wetrout.
Yeah, so tonight, I think we're, this is going to be on the consent agenda, but this is the lease for securing the modular unit for the temporary library. As you know, planning commission approved, the CSU, the community service use, and the temporary relocation of the library with the modular unit on the Tri-Mont site, 9600 Southeast Main. And so this will secure the unit for us, so that we have it, for a period of 18 months, and then I believe there's a renewal. So we're negotiating the kind of the final terms of the lease, but in terms of the overall costs, which we're estimating for 18 months, plus a tear down and installation cost, we are looking for approval to move forward with the lease in the amount of $325,000 maximum. We don't expect to spend that much. And so this is just essential for us to both secure that lease, to secure the unit, and enable us to move forward with that. And we're looking at the relocation starting sometime late spring.
2018.
Early summer of 2018. Oh, very good. So that we can stay as much on schedule as possible with the construction, the reconstruction of the library. So that's, that's where it stands. Both Amy and I are available if you have any questions about the lease, or, or the move, anything.
You said it's still, my one question is, there's the added, if lease is terminated early and building is leased to another entity with minimum, is that going?
I didn't hear what you said.
The portion of the, if the lease is terminated, the very end of it, you've got a couple of things to add to the lease, suggested language about if lease is terminated early and building is leased to another entity within minimum lease period, Lissy is entitled to a refund of lease paid for overlapping period.
Right.
Is that likely to, because that's actually kind of more in line with what we were actually, what we were talking about at the task force, which is that we would be able to leave. This is, one of the benefits is that we could get out of it early.
Yeah, I think, I think that is still, that is still under consideration. We negotiated the rates based on an 18 months.
They have agreed to that term, though.
They have?
Yeah.
Oh, good, that was my question.
Yeah, no, they've agreed to all the terms.
You should thank Haley.
Yes. I didn't see Haley comment.
Negotiated the lease, so I added that term and they were open to it. So basically, the rates that we got, we had to commit to the 18 months, but I wanted, because we're only supposed to have a 12-month construction period, but we don't know, and that can't quite count the demo, so I wanted us to have an opportunity to potentially recapture those funds.
Yes.
If we got out early and they were able to release it, so that we weren't.
So they are open to that?
Yeah, they've already agreed to that term.
Okay, great, that was my only question. That's, thank you.
They've been, they've been highly flexible and very easy to work with, so we've got, we've got some wiggle room as far as like our start dates and everything. Of course, we're not getting charged until we actually mobilize.
Right, right.
Till they actually have it installed, right?
How much lead time do they need?
At the very end, it said if we tell them before June, June, basically 30 days, or like, if we go now, but if it's going to be after June, the summers are believed time, so they've asked for at least 60 days. So basically, we're hoping to narrow down the time to give them heads up sooner in the next couple of weeks, of whether it's earlier spring or later spring, or earlier summer. But they're willing to work with us at this point. So we can move in as late as September 1st, or have them mobilized as late as September 1st and not start paying.
Yeah.
Penalty.
And that was important, to have that flexibility.
What's the square footage?
Just 8,300 or something? Yeah, actually, it's a little bit.
And is it one, is it one building that's taken, or is it modules?
Two, it's put, it's put together.
Yeah, it's actually, we've been referring to it as the seven plus five, because it's, it's a unit that composes basically seven modules together, and then another adjoining unit that is five modules.
And will they be separated in that they each share a different purpose, or are they somehow connected to where you walk in and you're in the whole deal?
They, they are connected, so like, once you're in, you're in the whole deal. There is like a, for, there is a little bit of space between the seven plex and the five plex, if you will, but you, it should be almost imperceivable, like, it'd probably be a little bit thicker than normal walkway that you go through via door. Yeah, and then there are, there are some, the way that it's built out, there are some separated areas, so the library's currently programming the interior, so that they'll have, like, this is the mystery room, and this is the nonfiction room, and this is the Russian collection, and I, you know, I'm just, as an example, I don't know the exact layout of it yet, but there's also a large open area, so there's, there's a bit of flexibility, but it's, it's gonna be kind of themed, as far as the rooms go.
What do we do with our, the books that don't fit? Where do they go for the time being?
They go to Harvey. So we have our old firehouse, that's where we also have some wells, over by Water Tower Park. We are, we bumped up a project in the CIP, which was a new roof on that building, just to make sure we don't damage the books that we then store there, so that was our big priority, is making sure that the facility wouldn't have any issues once we put books in there, but that's the intent, is that we'll store them there.
Great.
Thank you. Thanks, Amy.
Thanks.
I'm away early, so.
And we're half hour early.
Oh, there you are.
That's a cool thing to do. Except to see what we have here yet.
P S A C.
All right, P S A C, that's right, so P S A C, let's see, P S A C.
I can summarize it, or are you, are you expecting some? I did get a response from Meg, because Meg was here for sure. Okay, we can wait, or we just thought he'd be a little bit late, so we just might not make it. And I have expected Heather, too, as well. Okay.
So do you wanna?
What do you wanna do?
Apologies.
Is there anything else we need to chat about that we could?
Talk about on air?
Yeah, I mean, retreat's coming up pretty soon, anything about that that we need to speak about?
I am happy to give you kind of a overview and see if you guys want anything added.
Okay.
So, uh, we are going to start at 10:00 AM and talk about the communication agreement, which is what we always start with, just to give you guys a chance to talk about how you communicate with each other and how you communicate with each other.
When is the retreat?
It is April 8.
It is?
It is April 8.
I can tell you, you're back here.
I'm wondering, I don't think I have a, I'm sorry, but anyway, keep going.
Well, let's hope for a moment. Are you in town?
I don't have it on my calendar, and I'm in Mexico, but.
You kinda have to be there, so we are probably gonna need to reschedule.
Is it on your calendar?
No, it's not on my calendar either. Okay. Unless I'm like looking at it completely the wrong way, which is possible. No, I'm looking at, it's on mine, but that's because I put it there. Scott, would you mind sending out a Joodle Pool? We'll have to reset. It's, I do have hold for council retreat, but that's because I put that there, I don't have a.
Yeah, I have hold for council retreat.
Well, I may have made a mistake, then.
No, I'm gonna own it.
I've known about this for a while, so, I mean, I bought my tickets back in November, if that date had come up, I think I would've said. Maybe not, I don't know.
No, we'll reschedule. So, let's talk about what you wanna cover, and we'll get you guys out of Joodle Pool. And actually, we, we may need to do a special discussion then around goals, because I do need to have some decisions about goals prior to the budget, and I need to be able to present the budget. So what I would recommend, based on that feedback, is that we probably, are you in town at the April 3 meeting?
Yes, at least Saturday, the 7th to the 14th, I think.
Okay, so I am probably going to bump things off of the council agenda for April 3, and I will probably take over an hour of that night in order to do a quasi-retreat around goal setting. I can also send out the communications agreement that night, and we can have a discussion about that. There's a couple of tweaks that I'm gonna recommend, just making sure that we're clear about staff versus management, and how we communicate with them differently. But otherwise, we've adopted the same one for several years, so I'm guessing that that's gonna be a relatively easy conversation. The other thing that we were intending to do was actually do a press training, but that is less time sensitive, so we can schedule that for a different night. Or we could even do it as a part of the night that we do the joint meeting with Planning Commission. So if we wanted to do, we're gonna bring in a speaker for you all, who talks about technology and planning, and kind of what the new, exciting future stuff is coming, so that as you guys are working on comp plan, you sort of have the newest information. That's not till July.
Okay.
And it'll be the study session night when we do that. So we may tie it into that, Kelly and I can work on coming up with a date, so maybe we cancel the retreat in its entirety, and I'll see if I can take over a portion of the third, just so that we get some time to chat.
Can you still get the homemade soup?
I will make homemade soup that night, just for you.
It just sounded so good.
It is, it was gonna be yummy, because I was gonna make you a couple different kinds.
You, go eat your gazpacho or whatever instead.
Ceviche or something.
Tacos.
So, yeah, we will, why don't we plan on that? Let's just cancel the retreat, take over a couple hours or an hour and a half, come up with a time to do the training with Jordan. I do think that that is really useful, after the last year, some of our interactions with the press, it just helps to be a little more comfortable talking to them and talking about how you can use the staff to your advantage when you're in those situations and talking to the press. And that's really what Jordan was gonna do, is just sort of talk about best practices in crisis communication, so that you guys know how they typically encourage people to respond, and also help you practice that. So, I get a weekend back, and I'm not gonna complain about that, actually. So can you take that off, Scott? Will you just take it off entirely?
It wasn't off, so.
No, actually, it's on all of our documents. That's why he thinks that we sent out an invite. So we'll just publicly make sure that it's noticed that it's been canceled, and we'll figure out a different way to do it. Does that work? Don't be, we didn't get you the date reservation evidently, so that's on us.
Maybe you did, and it's not.
Well, then I did the same thing you did, because I'm gonna go with it, with us.
We did put it on calendars, but there was an email that, there was exchange emails, we asked about dates back in January, but.
Right.
We didn't put it on anyone's calendars, on Outlook, so, sorry about that.
So, that works.
Aren't you glad we had this discussion?
I actually really am, this makes my entire week, and it gives me an entire weekend.
Gives you a whole weekend!
No, this is great, like, I thought it was the name, but we had a weekend up. Will does join me, you know. Anything else that you guys feel like, if we're not doing a retreat this year, that you wanna make sure we cover through something else?
I think we probably should still do a retreat.
Yeah, just.
So here's the problem you're running into. End of April, you guys start having at least two meetings a week.
Yeah.
So I start getting a little nervous about overscheduling you, and then that goes into your approvals in June, so if you wanted to do something, then you're looking at probably July, which is hard to schedule for most people, because we have so many appointments.
Like, so after the fact, if you're talking about something, I mean, we will have set the goals ahead of time, but, so maybe, maybe though that even though we have all those other meetings starting in late April and through May, still, maybe there's a Saturday afternoon or a Sunday part of a day where we can talk about the other kinds of things, because if we're not gonna talk about goals, if that will have already been done, then it's a foreshortened time period.
So the other thing that I'm gonna ask, just because we're sitting here right now and otherwise I'll forget, is if Scott would put on his agenda the day after the election to send out a email to those who win, a retreat date for January, because that's really when we need to be doing this, and we need to get back on that schedule of doing this in January.
Yeah.
If you guys would like some time just to talk, and you wanna notice that kind of time around that sort of strategic vision that you and I had hoped to get out of this experience, we can do that, but it's not quite as pressed. So I'm less concerned about making sure we get to that, we probably have till June or July.
Do we have any of those council dinners?
We have one coming up in two weeks.
One coming up at Lissa's?
Yeah.
Could we?
Notice it that way?
Make that longer and notice it that way?
Yeah.
Starting early there?
Only two weeks, but that's.
Yeah, you only, you actually, although, you don't even have to notice a week, because it's non-ordinance, you guys could do a meeting the day before.
Well, if I might, just trying to, you know, think of the whole dynamics of the thing, I mean, spouses and children may be there, too, so.
Yeah, we might, oh.
You know, think about that.
He'll be thrilled to avoid you guys.
When's the dinner?
Uh, that is.
Is it Saturday or Sunday?
It's a Sunday.
Oh, on the 29th?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that April 29th? Okay, so it's longer, it's five weeks, so we're five. Do you wanna add it to that?
Yeah.
Okay. So Scott, would you notice that as being?
Yeah, so it's from 5 to 8 right now, so.
That's plenty of time.
Time period.
Yeah.
Yeah, which same time it is.
And then, yeah, let's make it council leaders and mayor and me and Kelly, more so than spouses, if that's okay with you guys?
Yeah.
Well, and it's still publicly noticed, just so people know who are on air, if you wanna come participate in that conversation, you can, but it'll allow us to be a little more focused during the discussion, and it'll be held at Lisa Beatty's house.
Yeah.
So we will, we'll break it up that way, and we'll figure out how to connect the PIO PR training into some plans. Okay. I filled 15 minutes, and you gave me a weekend back, so that was pretty, that was impressive, actually, I mean.
Well, here's a, here's a crazy concept, to just sort of let percolate in your brain for a few months. So I sat today through the, two of the technical committees' meetings for the Climate Action Plan. One of them is on, I forget the whole name, but it's basically all the stuff that then has a carbon footprint, so, i.e. food, or procurement, you know, the printer paper, or.
Your secondary sources.
All the things, which, as it turns out, if you do all the little charts of, here's the embedded carbon in this, and here's the embedded carbon in that, that thing with all of our stock that we buy, from food to.
Clothing and stuff, too.
Everything that we buy is actually almost equal to everything else.
Hmm, for the primary.
So, and, and of that, the biggest item in that is food. And a lot of that is around meat. So there, all that was how a discussion got started about, and then waste, food waste, right? How much food waste creates methane, what, so there was a discussion about all the meetings that the city of Milwaukee has, and the food that we put on pizza, or whatever we put out, how much that goes to waste. And so I'm sitting there listening to all this, and then there was the question, well, how do we then start to encourage people to have a meatless Monday, or, you know, try vegetarian eating occasionally, or regularly, or something like that? And I thought, you know, it'd be super cool? Anne's gonna love this.
No, I just know how it's gonna go over when you say it, so, keep going.
Council meeting nights, particularly once we move down into the fire bay, right, which is the current working plan that we're gonna move into the fire bay, have a food truck that shows up, it's a vegetarian chef, he prepares a meal, teaches people, here's how I'm making this meal, here's what it is, you can have some, that's what we eat that night. So every Tuesday, there's an opportunity for people to come learn about how to prepare really amazing vegetarian food.
So people other than us?
People, people in addition to us.
So like the teaching kitchen over at Providence, Milwaukee, huh?
Kind of. So I don't even know if there's a guy out there that does this, or has the capability or anything, but, you know, it's wild and crazy.
It's actually not wild and crazy, it's just, um.
There's a time factor in there.
Right, we wouldn't get the lessons.
Well, you have a couple of problems.
We wouldn't be able to have the lessons, but we would be able to go out and join everybody for the food at 5:30 or whenever we go out.
There are definitely things we can look at. My guess is you're gonna have a hard time consistently making it worth the while of the food cart to be here, because they're gonna need to make money. So we'll only cover your food costs, and that's not gonna be a huge driver for everybody else. So that's my bigger concern, is that I don't know how many people you're gonna get to participate, and I'm not sure we're gonna be able to convince somebody they wanna do it. I think it's a cool concept.
Yeah, just something to think about, tweak, explore, maybe it's once a month.
Yeah, once a month, I mean, we're even just.
Maybe it's just in the summer.
If we did it once, it would be really cool.
You know, if it was, yeah, if it was just in the summer months.
Who is it that's starting to add to one of their burgers? It's a chain, is it?
What are they adding?
Mushrooms, ground mushrooms, and it actually enhances the flavor.
You mean like Jack in the Box?
It's somebody.
Oh, really?
Yeah, into hamburgers, and.
To take away some of the meat?
To take away some of the meat. And it reduces the footprint by a lot.
Cracker meal, like they sometimes do.
Oh, it was just, I just heard it on the radio within the last couple of weeks, and it was just really interesting that other restaurants have done this, and it's obviously a very.
Sounds very tasty.
Yes, yeah, brings up the umami in the burger, and, but, it was chain, it was like a, it was like a, it was like a Jack in the Box, or an Out, or something like that.
It seems to me that I've heard Jack in the Box talking about mushroom burgers, but I may be wrong.
Yeah.
But somehow that is what comes around.
Yeah, it was, when it was, but.
Yeah.
Thought it was very interesting. Sonic.
Oh, is it Sonic? Okay, which we don't have any of around here, so.
So if you guys were interested in trying to do this once, I don't think it's a huge staff implication, and we have a lot of contacts already into the food cart pods, so we could easily make an outreach and see if we could create something. If you're gonna go beyond once, I think it's probably gonna require a significant amount of staff time, and so I would ask that we do that in conjunction, you know, I'd need to know how this fits into other programs.
I imagine it's happening in conjunction, sort of with the climate action plan, actions that we're taking and thinking about it.
Kind of putting a focus on that.
Yeah.
Well, it's like Al Gore, and, you know, it's totally vegan, and having the composting at the conferences and stuff like that, I mean, that's, you know, those special kind of things, but, and, if it's like, one food truck and they fix one meal, we'd have to, and there'd have to be some vetting about what kind of food they're gonna fix, because we have so many varieties of people and what they can eat.
And it may make more sense to do this during like First Friday or something, but you have a lot of people here, and you could tie it into a broader discussion instead of us feeding council, just because then you have the population that'll buy it. So I'm trying to, I want them to be successful.
Or somebody.
Well, yeah, and maybe there's even, I mean, if we think even beyond that, with Pride Milwaukee and their kitchen, their, their teaching kitchen, maybe there's a way they could possibly do something mobile, you know, I mean, it wouldn't hurt to reach out and ask them, maybe even while I'm at View, might have the opportunity to do something.
Maybe. The reason it sort of occurred to me is that I think a lot of people don't eat vegetarian, because the two times they had a vegetarian meal, it was really boring.
And bulk a burger?
Yeah. And they're like, that stuff's gross, but if you get somebody that actually knows what they're doing.
Exactly.
Making amazing food, and you go, oh my God, that was vegetarian.
Yeah, yeah, I know, people do tend to think that being vegetarian means you have to eat something boring all the time, or tasteless, or cardboardy, or, you know, whatever, so, yeah.
I will put it on this list over here.
Yeah, my granddaughter could cook up some awesome things, she's been vegetarian for years, and she's quite the chef.
Yeah.
So I know, I mean, I know just the kinds of things that can be fixed, and look at what Lisa eats, I mean, she, she eats really cool food, you know, really tasty, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna bring turkey for the council dinner, do you think that she's gonna be?
You're gonna cook it in our stove? I'm sure she'll appreciate that.
I think that's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
I kinda like the First Friday thing, somehow, I mean.
But you were also thinking of some sort of teaching element to it?
Yeah, so that they're being taught how to cook, and then they get to have this amazing meal, so they've learned, just learned how to make an amazing thing. And if it's regular enough where, after X number of them, somebody's got two weeks worth of meals they know how to make that are vegetarian, you know, then it starts to move people into that, and it's, it's cheaper to eat vegetarian, too.
Yeah.
So it's also a, I don't know, it is, it seemed like there was a lot of opportunity there, and it's, I think a lot of the things we're gonna do around climate are gonna be education. It's just because, to affect the whole city, right, we can change our operations, we can use a different kind of concrete that doesn't have as much embodied carbon, that was the other thing today, all these things, but we can't make people eat food differently, but if we can help them find it.
Encourage them.
If we can encourage, if we can teach, if we can share.
Yeah.
And it makes it more community and fun, right? A bunch of people came down, they learned how to eat this amazing, or eat, cook this amazing food, and had a meal with a bunch of people, and just sort of more of that community fun.
From an educational standpoint, too, we need, maybe at the farmer's market, our, at some point, our booth should have a climate educational piece that will rotate, like, show them across limited timber, or, you know, whatever. Because there are a lot of, there'll be a lot of educational opportunities for different Because there'll be a lot of educational opportunities for different things.
Well, we used it last summer for the solar program, to try and get that information out. So we have used it in that way in the past. One of the things that Jason really tries to focus on is making sure that we don't overwhelm the booth, so that it's hard to talk about, you know, it's like pick a topic for the week, and then we can change that, but make sure that we're talking about something consistent.
Well, when we did the solar stuff, most of the time when we did the solar, it was doing the survey, not the survey, but doing the, you know, where do you live, and let us check your house. So there was, there was a...
Purpose.
The consultant was there with us, you know?
Alma Frankenstein.
Yeah, Alma Frankenstein was there, and she pretty well took care of that while the rest of us, you know, kind of manned the regular booth, and encouraged people to go over and, hey, check out the solar program, and see if your house is eligible, and, you know, whatever. So that model worked really well.
Yep. Hey Chuck, how we doing on time? Seven minutes?
It was four forty-five, it's seven. I don't know, seven minutes. You wanna, I mean, it's either way.
No, I'm trying to think if there's anything else that's on, that's not contentious. Do we wanna talk about the items that you're planning on pulling, so that you don't have to go on to a much discussion?
That's a good idea. Well, I mean, part of the purpose of pulling it is to have more of a discussion on camera, but we can, so I'm gonna pull the...
Something that are on the regular agenda.
Yeah, like the census.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
I'm gonna pull the net neutrality resolution to add another, now therefore, at the bottom, it says, Scott, do you have it, because I don't remember exactly what I wrote. It says something to the effect, and failing that, council works for other methods for... Did you print one out? Is there one on the dais? I could go grab it.
Be a further resolved that authorizes the mayor's general to endorse legislation letters.
He's gonna have it, he's gonna have it.
I'm at it, yeah.
You're adding it, are you adding something else?
Yeah, there'll be a third.
Oh, it's not on there now.
I can read it if not. Do you need me to?
Do you have it, Ann?
Yeah. So it will be, be a further resolved, failing to overturn this ruling, Milwaukee City Council will explore alternative methods to secure access to critical unfettered high-speed internet service for our residents.
So I'm sorry, tell me that again.
Sure, so, be a further resolved. It means, well, I think that's an important conversation, and this is where Mark and I have been talking a lot this week. My concern right now is that we do not have staff to look at doing broadband as the city. We did do some initial research on it a couple of months ago. We got to the point where we realized it would take a substantial amount of city investment in order to move a program further. We also heard that the county was moving a program further.
They are. Putting in a subcommittee at EDC right now to research the whole broadband, you know, ISP, who has the county involved, what that means for the cities, whatever, and that committee will be put in place at our next EDC meeting.
So part of the discussion is that we are going to, unless council, why I'd like to talk about goals, unless council wants to prioritize broadband as one of the goals for the coming year, I don't have extra people to work on it. So Mark and I talked, that wasn't his intention right now. We will have a staff person who's sort of keeping her hand in the discussion at the county, just to understand where they're at and what's going on. Kelly is gonna go sit and hang out with them a little bit, just to make sure that we're aware of what's going on, so that we don't, we don't pass things up. But we also don't have nearly enough information to make any recommendations.
Right. So this is just saying that should we fail to change federal minds, that, that isn't the council going, oh well, we tried, we're done, that we will explore other ways to solve the problem. And I think...
But it's not saying that we will enter.
We will do it.
Nope.
Because it's my understanding, that's probably like an eight or ten million dollar...
Oh, it'll be more than that for Milwaukee.
Yeah.
But Sandy paid their back in...
Jesus out of me right now.
In fairly short order. In any case, it's not something we would start this year. We would just be paying attention, we would be keeping abreast, we would be thinking as we're putting in the safe infrastructure, do we wanna lay in conduit? Because laying in fiber-appropriate conduit is not that expensive.
Well, when you say not that expensive, what do you mean, and how do you mean, what, where does that fit in the prioritization? And what if the county decides to go some, you know, either take it over or go to some different way?
They're still gonna have to run the fiber.
It concerns me, it seems like there's a lot of unanswered questions, and if we're talking about laying in conduit...
Conduit is basically a piece of PVC pipe.
Okay.
It's relatively, I mean, it's pennies.
Well, on this ordinance, we're not, we're not doing it, we're not talking about doing any of those things.
We're not doing anything. This is just, should it fail, then our council will take up the conversation and begin to explore other ways that we can address this issue.
But it doesn't tie us into taking steps to make something happen.
No.
But net neutrality is different then.
Well, it is. But we control, see, right? If we're the ISP, then there is no net neutrality problem, because we're not gonna be throttling.
Yeah.
Right? So that's, that's the way. And there's, there's a lot of thinking out there in sort of the smart cities realm that internet should be a public utility. It shouldn't be something that people are making ridiculous money on, and controlling what people see and don't see, and how much speed people have and don't have.
And the disparity in households who can have high speeds, just having internet access.
Exactly.
What does that do for schools and the children?
Exactly. So it's just, it's a conversation that, this is just sort of setting the first little, it's not even calling out for us to be an ISP, it's just saying, we will start to explore other ways to address the issue. So that's, that's all that sentence is still.
And I am great with that explanation. We have now had this conversation on air in front of councilors.
Yeah. I just don't wanna tie us into something that then ends up that...
No tying in, it's just, it's just saying.
And especially since the county's in the beginning of exploring this whole thing themselves, and what does that mean for the cities and everything?
Well, we went to the first meeting about it.
Pretty high priority on that, for the, well, the first meeting about it was actually held at the Economic Development Commission, and with the Economic Development Commission Executive Board and the county commissioners. And they're the ones that gave us, the EDC, the charge to explore this on behalf of the county, so...
There was a meeting before that. And then there was a meeting since that.
Right.
I think the county is exploring all kinds of different options. Some of the options are to partner with private entities, some of the options are to partner with cities. So they're still exploring options.
Right. Which is why we're forming a subcommittee out of the Economic Development Commission to explore all of those kinds of things.
Could we require net neutrality out of our right-of-way franchise?
It's a great question, actually. I'm guessing you'd be hard-pressed, because we already have contracts, but I think it's get renewed. Yeah, but it's number one.
There are really long contracts.
Long term.
We just did it, yeah.
And how do you regulate that? How do you, how do you prove, right? That's gonna be really tough.
But there's this guy who's an attorney on our city council, who kind of thinks about franchise stuff sometimes, and I think it'd be really good if we could maybe have this discussion.
See, and that fits right in that sentence, too. Exploring new ways to address.
Exploring, there you go.
And when we met with the county, we also brought up that ideally, if they go down this path without us, that we would appreciate if they went down a path that protected people's access as well. So it doesn't have to be that we're running the system for them to be able to adopt the same policy that would apply to our people. So we're, I think that that's why we wanna stay close enough that we know what's happening, but we do not have, I mean, Kelly's, I'm already overworking her, she's, I mean, she's sitting back there working, but she is agreeing to at least go participate in some of these high-level discussions. Okay, thanks. The second one was actually about the bridge.
Yes.
And since we have one of the two engineering team here, but I detected the other one.
So I'm planning to pull that one as well. I'm not thrilled with that contract.
Okay.
I think we could've done better on that contract. I have questions about the percentage that they're paying of this bridge, I also have questions about their ongoing maintenance, or lack thereof requirements, as they are going to be driving the heaviest trucks by far over that bridge, and therefore being responsible for the faster degradation. So...
Well, and this, this actually lessens the flexibility. So we had a lot of, not a lot, we had some flexibility in the last contract, we add this one, further constrains our ability to get money.
From the county?
From the county. And I think it is an important discussion. Chuck and I started this dialogue a year ago, was my first meeting with him, he'd been working on it already for a year.
Yeah, I've been working on it, actually, since the event, December fifteenth.
So we needed to put it forward to council, because at this point, we needed you guys to tell us if this was sufficient, because otherwise, we needed to go back and be able to say council was not comfortable with where we were at. What I'm hearing is that we're not, but you guys will have to make a vote at the six o'clock meeting to that effect, but it is gonna get pulled, and please know that we're great continuing these discussions, and we're great going back to Wes and asking for maintenance money.
Did you, did you get an answer? I have not been able to look at my email all day, so, did I, did I even send you the question, or did I just think about it?
I did.
Okay.
I took that.
Thanks. And I did get her a answer.
But if you wanna explain what the cost essentials are, that'd be great.
I don't have them in front of me, but basically, I do know that the, we did an estimate early on when we were working with FEMA related to it, and the ad for truck traffic was about 550,000 versus a standard park bridge. So that's what I thought, of the capacity of the bridge, the HS25 loading. So half a million dollars in there, offering to give us, what is it, 137?
137. And we currently, so we're currently estimating out of pocket expense at 709.
Right.
Right. So we're paying a disproportionate...
Now, do you remember, I mean, the original IGA, though, has language in it that...
Which was also a bad IGA.
Which restricts a little bit of the negotiating. Well, and, so this, we're on this trajectory where we're getting...
It's getting...
I can't use the words I wanna use, because we're on air. We are getting more and more poorly treated on a downward trajectory via this contract, and it wasn't a great contract to begin with. I believe if Lisa was here, her memory of it would be far better than mine, and she would start being really angry about now, because it was not good the first time, and it got, it got worse now. So I'm, I'm not comfortable at all saying, yeah, that's a good contract, let's go forward with that. I would like to see that relooked up, and that, that number was the one I would...
Do you remember the basis of it, is that we have easement to access the park across their property?
Well, but also remember that we ended up having to do something we didn't wanna do, which was to have that secondary easement add-on to, so, the way we designed the park, there wasn't that ramp that came up off the bridge and out across from Washington. The only entrance and exit was there by the sewage treatment plant. The West made us do that secondary thing, so, A, it took up a bunch of our park, B, it cost us like a whole bunch more time, because we had to go back to ODOT for new permits. It was just this ongoing, running, continually worsening battle. And that was why, when I read this, I was like, wait a minute, their whole attitude about that bridge during those negotiations was, wait a minute, that's our bridge. You have to build us access off of that bridge, so that we can turn, but they wanna turn left.
They wanna go...
So that we can turn, go north out of our facility. And so now, back then when they were negotiating, it was their bridge. Now, when they have to actually pay money for it, well, all of a sudden, now it's our bridge. Yeah, so that, yeah, that's...
It was recognized as our bridge in the final IGA.
It was, but during the negotiations, that was not the way they talked about it. They had, they had a permanent easement, they had, I mean, it was some way that they were couching that, that we couldn't decide to not let them use that bridge. That was not within our powers of decision. That was, that was their attitude during the negotiations. So we ended up with all that extra infrastructure, with a chunk of the park gone, with, you know, more time delays, which of course cost us more money. And they charged us for the easement across their property, too.
Yeah, you have the full IGA.
Yeah. So I'm planning to pull it and just ask staff to go back and continue negotiating that.
Any direction in what things you would like to see in the IGA?
We would like to see some maintenance funding.
For sure, maintenance funding, and I'm personally pushing back on the amount they're planning to pay for this rebuild of the bridge. Because as Chuck just pointed out, it's a half a million dollars more expensive because of their trucks. We would not have had to build a bridge that strong if big trucks full of water, full of fluid, were not having to go across it. Right?
Yes. The existing wording, that's complicated.
I know. But, it's like, we got a bad contract to begin with, and we're just making it worse.
Did the original one have ongoing maintenance language, which is being...
It did, and had a percentage to be determined later, which never happened. Right. So that's where we're at.
Right, they've never done any?
So is their percentage estimate then?
Zero maintenance.
Their percentage is a lot lower than what my percentage comes.
But I mean, they're proposing no maintenance, or?
Yes.
Now, yeah.
Except for surfacing, which I've managed to keep them, at least helping with the deck, but nothing on any of the substructure, retaining walls, foundation. Not okay. Just out of curiosity, was Story, the person negotiating this?
Yeah.
He wasn't there yet.
So he wasn't at any of the meetings?
So we will work on that, depending on your vote in a few minutes. Do you guys wanna start the rest of your...
Yeah.
Sure. So yeah, I have to apologize to guess Heather's here, she's the secretary for PSEC. I thought Meg replied that she would be here. She was actually replying to Heather's email saying that she would be at Thursday's meeting.
There were a lot of emails.
So, too many emails going out simultaneously, we got confused, our meeting, they were replying to, we just did say he would be potentially late, he wasn't sure if he could get off on time for four forty-five. So in your packets, you have their proposed bylaw changes, they do have a couple of minor proposed bylaw changes, and then an updated work plan, and then I guess I'll give you the...
Yeah, I have a mind, this is easier. So we just basically wanted to change the Article I, Section III concerning a quorum, because we're finding on a couple of meetings, at least one meeting, that enough people showed up to actually conduct business, but there weren't all the officers there. So we wanna make it to where you could temporarily assign officers and get some business done. So we made that change to Section III. You guys can see it, right? Do I need to...
Yeah, we can tell.
Okay. So that was the only one, right? No, Article III, Section III, I guess, sorry. Oh, this just reflects that any city staff member can send out the agenda and the meeting materials, since generally, it is someone on Chuck's staff that sends out a reminder in the meeting materials. It doesn't have to be, I think before it said, the chairperson would send it out, but it's not actually usually him, so we just changed that part.
And partially that's it, because Angel was too good, the chairperson.
Yeah, that's too much, I just wanted to put it against.
And she would do all that, and we also wanna make sure by us sending it out, we get it on the website through the web lockout, so all the e-packets and everything are up there, and it gets all the meeting invites to everybody through the web. What do they call that, Scott? The portal through the website?
Portal.
On how it goes out, but it's how we send out meetings for your announcements and everything else, so everybody gets the proper announcements. That wasn't happening for a while when I first came, because one, I didn't really understand the situation, and then Angel was kind enough to ship it out for me, so it was awesome.
Yeah, and a city staff member is always gonna have access to that portal, or whatever we're calling it, so it's not, we have a changing.
And the bylaws were written that we weren't supposed to be doing that.
Yeah. So that's that change, and we've voted unanimously on those changes, so, is there any other info you all need on that? Okay.
The only question I had on the, on the quorum part is, I just didn't know if it was the word that you were thinking. It's the second, or third sentence, if a quorum is not attained 15 minutes of the scheduled time? You mean after the scheduled time?
By.
By? The word up doesn't...
Fifteen minutes after, their, their meetings are usually canceled like in...
Within, is it supposed to say within 15 minutes of scheduled meeting time?
Yeah, that's a typo. If a quorum is not attained 15 minutes, it should be within 15 minutes of the scheduled time.
Oh, okay.
So it's missing a within, sorry. So, it's missing a "within."
Okay.
Sorry.
That's the only question I had.
Attained within--
Oh, and are we adopting these tonight?
Right.
So, the only other thing was at the very top, where it says adopted by Milwaukee City Council, is that saying it's 17? So, I didn't know if we were doing that.
Uh, these are the red lines that you adopted before of last year, so you'll be coming in a consent agenda at a future meeting.
In April, okay, 17.
I didn't type that part in.
Part of it is, is we schedule these, so they can go back to the committee if you do want some tweaks--
I see.
And then they re-approve it or not approve it. Last year, that happened with the COAB board, so you guys had quite a few changes, you wanted to make to that. Okay?
So, moving on to the work plan, um, we really only had changes to, well, the safe routes to school. We, previously, we had one PSEC member assigned to each school to work on that, but the way that that program is evolving, that doesn't really make sense, and we're gonna have more information on that from Nicole Perry after her meeting this afternoon. It's too many meetings.
And for those of you who don't know, that, I mean, the county's basically has started a big program over safe routes to schools, so, and Nicole works for the county now.
Yeah.
So, uh, they're taking that charge with the district.
Yeah, right.
Oh, they are, yeah.
And was today their meeting?
Today, right now, it's, I mean, it was at 3:30, 3:30 to 5:30.
Yeah, I knew, I couldn't get there, because of this.
So, we'll know more about our role in that when she reports back to us. Then, in the additional tasks, we changed, um, the bike rodeo portion of that to, um, reaching out and connecting with Milwaukee's Open Streets event, to see what we can do there to help communicate with the neighborhoods about what's going on, and where and when streets will be closed off, et cetera, et cetera. What else was in here?
Alternative street design standards?
Oh, yes.
That came up today. That, actually, I did a few tweaks for them on that, because it was, previously, it was written for, how it was, we did do some work on it, so the idea is, is that we would take in some of the design standards from the WUENRIF contract, and come up with alternative street design standards that we could then bring back and incorporate into our public work standards.
Okay.
Primarily around low volume, if you remember right.
Right.
There was some discussions about low volume for permanently dead-end streets. And it would, and how to deal with ADA in relationship to those streets.
Yep.
So, in a nutshell, if there's a, there'd be a, some kind of path, if it's a through street, and if there isn't a through street, we would try to do something on street, the shared space, is kind of how it was leaning. But I haven't had any staff time available to proceed with any work on that yet, so it's kind of just postponed now till this fall, I think. So, I figured we could get back to it.
Portland just revised its programming around creating play streets, so that's a place to look instead of--
That's what they're calling it, play streets? That's cool.
Especially, I mean, especially for a dead end, you know, unimproved street. That's probably a good option, and also not recreating the wheel, someone else has already done all that work, and people are already using the program, so just a place to check out for ideas and language.
So, those are the changes I think there. And then the other thing I am, I've put on here based on an earlier conversation we had, I think Kelly actually brought up this, is there a opportunity for PSEC to become involved moving forward with the safe route to school? They kind of, that was their big thing, they kind of completed that, it's all prioritized, but--
Safe routes to schools, or the safe--
Or the safe program.
Okay.
In the public outreach element, I mean, we're gonna have impact a lot, and they do have members in every single NDA, is that something that maybe we could give them as an additional charge to take that and try to help us with all that public outreach?
Right.
I would say absolutely yes, I think that's the perfect, I mean, you're, it was already the, the, the committee that was assigned to be the one who, you know, to address the ADA transition plan, and so it makes sense to sort of transition that role into this new, I mean, we're already talking about having to do a whole lot of really amped-up public outreach on this process, so--
Well, we've also talked about including a PSEC member on the selection for the RFQ, and so we'll be working with them to make sure that the engagement officer or team that we bring in to do sort of that process connects well with safe--
And with PSEC. Well, and uses, and uses them as a resource. I mean, you know, even though, you know, we hired someone to do the public outreach for the vision, but then there was the committee, and it makes sense to me that PSEC would be a committee that would help.
Right, it is the one committee in town where we have it. Definitely somebody from the NDA, whose job is to interface with the NDAs, and ideally the neighborhood.
Right.
So, yeah, I think that's a good piece, and if I were throwing out, like, if you're looking for tasks--
Because you want to be marketing. I've actually seen Heather twice in the last weeks.
Just starting to explore the concepts around Vision Zero, and is that something you think that Milwaukee should adopt? And if it should, when should it, what would be the date that we would pick?
And then council would have to have the difficult conversation of if that was now a priority, if there's other priorities on their goal list.
Well, they'll have to talk about it for a while.
I know, I'm just--
They'll have finished those--
That's just how I do that. Yeah, it's my job.
This is pre-fetching.
I know, I'm pre-fetching myself.
And a couple of things on the additional task that they've been doing for a little bit, is we've been using PSEC and the Ujari Department to help us with some of the unique traffic control requests that we receive, or some of the ADA-related requests that we've received to, and they are designated to the ADA community, but just to hear out those requests from those citizens, and try to see if that is legitimate, to help us get a public perspective, not just the technical, generic perspective, so-- Yeah, those are two other items that are on the additional list that we've added in this last year.
Right.
I don't have anything else.
Sounds good. They're a good working team.
They are.
I would only say that it's unfortunate that more aren't here, so that I could thank them for the work they're doing, because what you guys are doing is just wonderful, and I know we keep adding tasks, and I certainly appreciate all the time you're putting into it. I think you guys are doing great work.
Thank you, I'll take that back. 4:45 is kind of a really, very working folks.
They have two mem, they are missing two members.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, which neighborhoods?
No, one of them isn't actually missing, uh, he just replied to an email. Ardenwald, we thought was missing in action, but Llewelling was missing a member, so we need to work on getting--
So, from the, from the NDA?
The NDA.
Yes, from the NDA, Llewelling.
So, just wanted to put a little note out there, if you know anybody, they could use one more person.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks. Yes, that is happening, we're missing Llewelling.
And the Ardenwald is participating?
Um, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to get with him, or someone is--
That's Mark, right?
Mark, yeah, he, um, we thought he was missing, but he all of a sudden chirped in and replied that he, he actually wouldn't be attending the meeting on Thursday, because